All right, are we? No, I just, I think we're live, are we live? All right, well, you know, welcome to some technical difficulties. The 12 o'clock show is a little late and as you can see, we have a completely different view all the way around. So, welcome. It's not her fault, really, I promise. This is a technical issue. So, we're gonna jump right in. Again, thank you, Board President Angela Abram, for getting nice and cozy here on us, and right behind the desk. There are a lot of things going on, so let's just start off with the first basic thing. School funding is not the easiest thing to understand, even for those of us that are like in the world of school funding all the time. So, one question that always comes up is this idea of what this cash on hand means. What does that actually mean in context of the levy? What cash on hand means?
First of all, thanks for having me.
I'm glad we're in.
I know, just get on. Yeah, we're very like nervous laughter, just because like, hey, we're actually in. But cash on hand refers to the amount of money that we have in order to be able to manage our expenditures, our payroll, our utilities, those types of things. So, the levy in that context, you know, as we look at our operating deficit that we're currently in, okay, still figuring other stuff out. In that context,
It's completely, yeah, operating cash on hand.
Operating cash on hand, and then in the levy context with us having a deficit spending, it makes the deficit grow. And if we have too much expenditure, too much deficit, it impacts our cash balance. If we don't have enough cash, then we can't make payroll. And then our auditor of state would then go, hey, you don't have enough money to manage your bills. What are you gonna do? What's your plan? How are you gonna manage this? Oh, you don't know? You didn't pass that levy? Because it's, you know, we offer this much, the district offers this much. So, if the community's saying, no, we're not gonna pass this levy, then they're gonna go, okay, well, we're gonna have to like take away your local responsibility, and we're gonna come and, you know, watch you.
And we've seen the state of Ohio do that in a number of districts for that very same reason, so.
We certainly would not want to get on a fiscal watch from the state because we didn't pass a levy.
Well, social media can be a good thing and it can be a bad thing. And one of the things that I've seen amongst many posts all the way throughout are a couple of what I would consider misconceptions or, I, poor, poor facts, I guess, would be maybe the best way. I don't, I don't think anybody's outright lying on anything, but I think that there are a lot of things out there that people certainly don't understand how the system works. And again, I don't blame them. You don't know unless you ask questions and things like that. So, that's why you're here. So, first off, what are school districts actually required by the state of Ohio to pay? And I realize that's a huge, I'm not looking for a line item on everything, but just general idea, what is a school district actually required to pay for to provide services?
Okay, so we are required to pay for special education. We're required to pay for transportation K through eight. We are required to pay for basic utilities. Things that we don't have to pay for, that I call our want-tos. Our, our school resource officers, you know, we have a relationship with RPD, but we don't have to pay for that. We have school nurses. We don't have to pay for that. You know, back in the day, when I went to school, you know, the secretaries did all that. But, you know, we have needs that can't necessarily be met as well by secretarial staff, because that's not what they were actually hired for. Other things that we would like to pay for that we don't have to is, you know, the upkeep of our grounds. Some of our consultants or our contractors, we don't have to. But the reason we do is because it's important, for example, the social works contractors that we use. We don't have to do that, but we recognize the importance of behavioral mental health. And now it's impacting our students and our staff, so we want to make sure we have those services available.
Well, and that's, that's the thing that not everybody realizes, and this is not intended to say anything about what will or will not be cut, obviously, but this is just one of those things where, when push comes to shove, districts have to make decisions. For those of you that might be remembering from way back in the day, the last time the levies weren't passing, which is in 2008, nine, and 10 in that region, you know, a lot of staff is cut, a lot of services were cut, and things of that nature. Now, one question that I always see is, is the district top-heavy administrators? You know, that's all the thing. And I think a lot of that comes from not understanding what administrators are, and I, and I don't think this is, maybe it's a building thing, maybe it's not, but it's all of those other quote-unquote people that would work in a central office environment. But I will say that the world we live in today is not the world that we lived in 25 years ago. And so, with that, it's just a very basic question. Are, is the district in Reynoldsburg top-heavy?
No. So, one of those things that we do, that we don't have to do, is we have elementary assistant principals. That helps in the sense of it allows the principals to do their work, and it allows the teachers to do their work. But we don't have to provide that. Would that be top-heavy? No, because it allows the school, each school to individually function better. In regards to who's working at central office, we were operating on such a skeleton crew, there was so much that wasn't getting done. For example, if you were trying to find a job, and, you know, we had one person in human resources. So, that person was responsible for the recruitment, the retention, the hiring, the background checks, and exit surveys, and, you know, one person, just not reasonable ass.
With over 300 employees.
Right, yeah. And so, it just wasn't a reasonable ass. Additionally, we did surveys with Batel, you know, and Batel told us, you need this position, you need this position, you need this position. This is why, one of the many reasons why your district is not stable. So, some of the positions that we have created have brought much more stability to the district, and it's better.
Well, I mean, you talk about stability, the ideas, and that's one comment that I do see consistently on social media, is if you have consistency at the administrative level, which will help bring consistency in the teacher level, which will then bring consistency with, you know, the student instruction. And so, they're all kind of related. And the reality of the situation is, in this day and age, you have to be competitive. Because otherwise, administrators will leave. You know, there are some administrators that I know that have left in the past, and that's just because they're going, not because of anything that they had any animosity towards Reynoldsburg, but they left because they were getting paid X amount of dollars more for doing the same job in another location. So, that, that is in itself something that you have to be mindful of about that.
Right. So, one of the studies we did with Batel was a salary survey. And we were grossly below market in all areas, not just teaching. You know, our transportation, our cooks could go and work, you know, at Wendy's and make a better wage than what they would make here. Our teachers were able to go to neighboring districts and get, you know, 10,000 more. That's a life increase, you know, like we do more with that. And so, when we looked across at that, and even our assistant principals and our principals, everyone, it was underpaid. Even people in our central office now, they're underpaid as well. And so, we still need to make some additional corrections, so that we can retain the quality of people that we have.
Well, and that's, and again, it's the reality of the situation. We went through the same thing in the city for a number of years, going through the same process.
And with regards to the levy, you know, quality educators provide quality instruction. And if we want to retain the high quality that we have, we have to be able to compensate our employees here.
Well, next question is, and again, not getting into specifics, if the levy passes, will the district, are we looking to maintain, or will there be potential increases in services or something like that?
This is a total maintenance levy. This is an operating levy. This operating levy is what's called a fixed-sum levy. We call it an emergency levy. Actually, it's not a levy, it's, you know, how it's been designated by the state language. But it's an emergency levy, which will be for five years, so it's a fixed year. And it is for 6.65 mils, which equates to $232 per year, per $100,000. So, when we did the math, it was $19.34 per month, per 1,000, or excuse me, per $100,000. I had something on here that I wanted to tell you. This was our last financial forecast, and we were talking about just understanding what mileage is, because I think everyone is assuming that the taxation is on the full value of their home, and it's the one that I think is the first 35% of that home. Yeah, so your appraised value would be $100,000 in terms of your property tax. And the residential property tax is taxed at 35% of this value in Ohio. So, the property in Ohio is taxed at the one-mil collection of $35. And so, when you multiply that times the mileage, that's how we get to $232.
Well, and no one ever said that school funding was constituted, oh, I'm sorry, it's not constitutional, but it's frustrating. So, actually, I spent the weekend in Chicago, and we're, you know, as I always do, I'm just talking randomly, and they just use a completely different style of funding, you know, in front of our schools. So, maybe one day, Ohio, maybe.
Well, yeah. Well, I, I think the original case, that kind of kid has grown and has kids, that doesn't constitute those for that long.
And it's unfortunate that some people don't want to do it. Now, the next question that I always come out with, and this kind of goes with another question that was submitted, the state report card came out recently, and while there are some areas where Reynoldsburg excelled at, which I did bring up in last week's show, talking about a couple of schools and what they call the gap and things of that nature, others have some room to, room to improve. Now, overall, what is your take on the school report card in general, and specifically with regards to Reynoldsburg? But then, kind of also on top of that, well, let's just start with that. What do you think of the report card, other than it's pointless and it basically only checks, you know, the socioeconomic and everything? That's my opinion, but that's just me, not her.
Well, so, favor, you know, kind of the economics of your district. It's all plus snapshot of student in the day. But it is an indicator of where the general population of your community is performing. And when I was looking at some of the trends, even though when you look at, for example, I think we were gap closing. So, it's a five-star rating system, gap closing, we got three stars. I know in terms of the early literacy, which was a concern of a lot of people, we got two stars. But there were things that we did to address that. For example, we have partnerships, we've got Columbus Metropolitan Library comes in, I think, four hours, at least three days a week, to work with our students who need additional support. We put in all-day kindergarten, because we understand that a half-day is not enough to get everything that the state is looking for in, in our little five-year-olds. But we also recognize that we have students who come to school and they haven't gone preschool. And so, because of that, they don't know the structure of the school day. And they're learning some basic skills that we, as a district, assumed that they had already picked up in preschool. Skills such as how to hold a pencil, skills such as can sit for, you know, 20-minute intervals, is potty-trained. You know, so there are some basic things that we assumed some of our students would have those abilities, and they don't necessarily have them, so that takes time from the instruction in order to get that basic structure started for our students. But also, when I looked at the trends, we had 64.5% of the early literacy component addressed. So, 97% of our third graders made it to fourth grade. They were promoted. And then our proficiency in third-grade reading was at 57%. So, it's only a little bit more than half are proficient for third grade. So, one of the things our superintendent did was create a position to work, looking at our early education, you know, our K through five, you know, so that we're looking at, what are the components that need to be addressed? How are we addressing them? What will our metrics be in order to make sure that our students are learning? The trends over the last two years are showing that we are moving in the right direction, even though it may not look on that one snapshot day that we haven't made any change we have.
Well, a lot of it is also based on how the things are scoring, and I kind of talked about this last week, that we're not talking about, like, when I taught 10th grade US history and we had our state testing, our primary focus was they had to pass the test. Now, we're talking about growth and how growth indicators are there. So, it's not necessarily about passing the test, it's about whatever mathematical formula a student has to meet to, you know, to match what the state predicts they should grow in these areas. So, it's, it's, it's not always an apples-to-apples one. So, on this question that we did get, state report card data is challenging for the resident to understand, having said that, concern about the readiness of the third grades moving on. Can you comment on if families are fully aware of the stark ramifications of the current situation? Does our district have interest or in plans for fully engaging families to support? So, what, what, what's the district doing right now and will continue to do to get families more involved, and what can, what can parents do and guardians to help in this process? Because it ain't just, it's not just the school district, it's, it's everybody. So, what do you got? What do you got there?
So, let's go back to that friendly district report card. You see, in the achievement area, we have chronic absenteeism of 28%, so the first indicator would be send your kid to school. So that they can learn and be exposed to the, the social nature of school, so that, you know, they can sit and attend and learn what they need to know, you know, with regards to the school, state, and report cards. Knowing we got a community engagement and family liaison position that we did not find a suitable candidate for currently, so that is being managed by our communications director, Valerie Wonder. In addition, we also have a number of partnerships. I talked about Columbus Metropolitan Library, excuse me, but we also have a partnership with Ohio Jobs and Family Services. We have, if you go on our website, we have the diverse learners and whole child support tab. And there's a variety of community resources that is available to our families. We have partnerships with like Children's Hunger Alliance. The Metropolitan Library, not only do they come to us, they also have a lot of programs at the library that our children are able to access. Additional partnerships we have include Buckeye Ranch, United Way, they just gave us a nice amount of school supplies to help our families. We have Valley Met, and I most definitely have to mention the, that's the levy committee that I've been calling, so.
Why aren't they watching as well?
You know, sorry, they're so busy working, yeah, right? And I appreciate that. Thank you for all the work that you're doing, because I can only state facts. So, but the other partnership I wanted to mention was Nationwide Children's Behavioral Health that helps put families in contact with support for behavioral health, sports medicine, dental, and vision services. And so, that's a really great partnership that helps our families understand what resources are available to them. And those are all the ways that some of our partners are getting with us, because they know, you know, that we need our kids in school in order to learn.
And I think a lot of times, as parents, don't realize that there are all of these other resources, and to make sure that they have that available to it. I'm gonna bet that we have at least one question. I'm just hoping for one. Do we have one question?
Yeah, we have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Let's see what I can. And some of it, you, you've talked a little bit, but if there's anything you'd like to reemphasize on, I'm gonna go back, because they go back a little bit. Might you be able to speak about how this levy is to impact performance in measurable terms? So, taxpayers know what indicators we should be tracking to hold the board and districts accountable to moving forward our school, and moving our schools towards excellence?
Okay, right.
So, the person wants a guarantee, but if they vote for this levy, what kind of grade, what kind of, what's the next state report card gonna say? And I think that's,
Oh, that's.
It's an interesting question. I think it's, it's, it's a little subjective, because there's a huge variable in this.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, I can understand why someone would say, hey, you know, what am I getting for my, my money? What you will get for your money is continuation of the services you have. If you reduce the services, then the progress is going to be stunted. You can't continue to expect a higher bar to be met if you're not supplying the basic necessities or the basic foundational supports for a school district to be successful. So, I think maybe the misnomer or the misunderstanding is that we're asking above and beyond. This is not going to supply, it's not gonna create a new middle school, it's not gonna create a new preschool. One of the things that I bought, brought with me was our Build for the Future placard from the 2020 bond that we put on, or the 2021. And it was, we were trying to build an early learning center to alleviate overcrowding and provide space for district-wide full-day kindergarten. So, we put in kindergarten, but now we're at capacity at all the elementaries, you know. And I mean, when I say at capacity, I mean, we're doing things on stages. We're doing things in hallways that we've set up, you know, to kind of create these little individual areas to provide additional reading and additional math support. Our intervention specialists are everywhere they can be in the buildings. We had to move some specials on carps, right? And some, some children come to school for that special, you know, that is their, their lifeline.
And those specials, like art, music, and phys ed, we know from my own personal experience with the district back in the early, you know, 2008, nine, and 10, those are things that are not required by the state of Ohio, and those are typically things that are there. You know, I, I look at, I look at questions like this, and I get it, we all, we all want to know what the bang for the buck is. But part of the issue is also just a simple fact of, this is what I think you're gonna get out of this. You're gonna get teachers that dedicate almost every waking moment of their life to helping students. You're gonna get bus drivers that go out and deal with wonderful children on buses every single day. You're dealing with custodial workers that are keeping buildings clean, you're dealing with workers that are providing food to families who, in most cases, those are the only meals those kids get on a consistent basis. You're gonna get these teachers in the classroom, and their paraprofessionals, and their support aides, and their, and their administrators, that help them get into college, that help them get jobs, that help them do all of these particular things that are not measurable on a report card, that they just, it's not there. That's what you're gonna get out of this, and those are the real things that are there. Do the scores come afterwards? Yes.
Yes, of course.
You gotta go from that, and then a year from now, it's gonna be there, that where you're gonna see those improvements, like you've said, over the trending of those last couple of years, it's what's there.
Two other things I'd like to add to that is, you know, when we did our enrollment studies previously, enrollment had climbed over 23% in the last 10 years. And our elementary schools were projected to be out of space in two years. Well,
Here we are.
Here we are. So, so we're at capacity. In addition, you know, we created the diverse learners and whole child supports. And the reason that was created was because we have a significant number of children who have diverse learning needs, whether it is differing learning abilities, or if it's
English language.
English, English language learners. The test is English language arts, you know, and so, if we have students who are coming and it's not their first language, their score is not gonna be as robust. So, I say all that to say that if you decide that you're gonna vote for the levy, or if you don't decide to vote for the levy, our work is going to be the same. There's not gonna be a teacher who's gonna say, well, I'm gonna teach less because this didn't pass, you know.
And they're gonna, they're not gonna say, I'm gonna teach more just because, but they, but we want to make sure that they have those resources.
Right.
All right, a couple more questions, and then I know she's due to a technical issue, we, we are short of a few minutes and things, but.
You hit on, like, if the levy, how would you increase services in, in for math and English? Someone was saying, like, if the levy gets, oh, sorry, we have another one that keeps popping up here. If the levy gets us what we're already have, does that mean it also gets us the same academic achievement, which you just kind of discussed on that? And like, what would be those cuts for services? And you talked, most of that's gonna probably be the specials. So, you identified any areas of cuts?
So, I want to invite everyone to attend our October 2nd special board meeting, which, thank you for allowing us to use your city hall, it'll be here. My goodness, I think it's next week, yes, next week, October 2nd, I don't, yeah. And we will be discussing, you know, what is the role of a lot of the positions that are performed in the district, you know? Why is this job important? Why is this other job important? The decisions to make reductions is not something that would be made lightly. It would not be made without input from those who would be impacted, our stakeholders. And we want to make sure that what we're doing would be least disruptive. But we also didn't want to come out to the community without speaking to our staff first, because we didn't want to incite panic. And we didn't want people thinking, oh, well, I better start looking for a job now, because, you know, this isn't gonna pass, and, you know, we're not gonna be able to, you know, work here. And so, we wanted to make sure we spoke with our staff first before talking with our community about potential reductions. But I, I feel like, you know, this is an, this is an opportunity. We know that our communities are as strong as our schools, and our schools are as strong as our community. And you can't have it both ways. You can't not support your school district, and you can't not support your city that's providing, say, our Boys and Girls Club, you know? If you don't support any, any of those, and then also bash what's happening to our kids, then, you know, you're not part of the solution, and we're trying to be solution-oriented. We looked at this funding deficit, we have this amount that the state gives us, we have this amount that is expected from the local share of the community. We did not set these rules of engagement. We're playing the game that was given to us. And so, given those rules of engagement, each community is expected to give a certain amount of share. The state says we're gonna give this amount, oh, but your property tax of, is going up. So, we think that your community can give more, so therefore, we're gonna give less. So, for example, for this fiscal year, we received, what? I think it's one and a half million dollars less from the state. I'm just gonna confirm, let me just look this up very quickly. Because if, of course, now it's like 17 pages of stuff that I gotta look through. But the
Well, while you're looking at it, I'll, I'll.
Find it very quickly, yeah.
You know, and you may not be aware of this, if you haven't watched the show, there are very specific rules from the state of Ohio about what she can and cannot say. She is only allowed to give very factual information, and anything that is perceived as persuasive could be an S. And anything that is perceived as persuasive could be an es- in essence against the rules. So she can't, when you say, what are you gonna cut? If she were to say, I'm gonna cut this program, this program, and this program, that could be perceived as and in negative context. And then the district could be held accountable for something like that. So that there are very strict rules. I have no rules on those, so I can speak a lot more freely, but I can't speak to what could or cannot be. But all you have to do is look over any district in such in Ohio over the last thirty years. And you're gonna know the things that are probably gonna be cut. There's gonna be reduction in services. There's gonna be reductions in staff. There's gonna be a reduction in activities and things like that. Those are just the typical things that most districts do. Now, what capacity, what quality, what all of that is gonna change based on other things. But so I, for those of out there that are like, well, she's not answering the question, though she can, she can only answer to so much on terms of facts. It's not anything other than that.
And um it's disheartening that as a president of a district board body, that I am prohibited from talking about what I know is in the best interest of the district. But like I said, it's rules of, rules of engagement. But one of the things I wanted to add is that if the levy uh doesn't pass and we have to make these reductions, whatever they are determined to be, um we will still be in deficit spending. So it's not as if um that, okay, it doesn't pass and, you know, we make the cuts and then we're just fine. No. And so it becomes this snowball. Um the other thing I wanted to, that I found after leafing through my papers. So the fiscal year twenty twenty four, the state share of the base cost, um the base cost is um eight thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars. State share was five thousand three hundred and twenty-two. So that was sixty-five percent of the share. Our district or, you know, pay the rest. But for fiscal year twenty-five, uh state share uh was five thousand dollars, which was a state share drop of three percent. So um yeah, equated to about a one and a half million dollars.
And that all's part of what you just mentioned earlier is the fact that when property values go up, they feel that the state doesn't feel that there's so therefore, it's on the, on the community itself, which again goes into a lot of things that we've been talking about on the show for a long time about the impact of housing crisis and why there's property tax increases. All right, do we have any other questions that haven't already been asked?
Most of them. Just wanna let you know that Joe Swornson is in the waiting room for our next.
Well, let's, let's end this on a moderately, I think, a pretty good positive note. Um a question that I think is, I would like to say is a softball question from Neil Whitman. Says, what's this I hear about our food service director getting some kind of award or something? Well, first of all, I'm betting Neil knows the answer. We're gonna suspend rules of disbelief for a moment. So what, what, what award are we talking about?
To know. Um and now, uh let me tell you two things. We have amazing employees. Of course, we already knew this, right? Um but they're not often recognized um for the extraordinary things they do because they don't see it that way. They just say, I'm just doing my job, right? Wendy Novotny is our food service uh director and she was uh un- acknowledged by the Ohio School Boards Association. And as an exemplary employee, um we nominated her last year, but we were outside of the nomination cycle, so she couldn't get acknowledged until this year. Um the reason we wanted to nominate her was a number of reasons, but the thing that stood out to me was I was having office hours, no one came, and Neil and I were there and we were just talking about school lunch debt. Wendy's going by, she's getting ready to leave. And I said, hey, you know, next time you have an opportunity to talk, I'd love to talk to you about school lunch debt, et cetera. And she's like, oh, okay. And then she sat down. She stopped what she was doing. She stopped where she was going. And she sat and she explained school lunch debt to Neil and I for almost an hour. Um we were gonna be there anyway because we were having office hours. Um but that's an above and beyond thing. And I felt like if she's gonna treat us that way, then I know that that's how she's um interacting with the people that she leads. Um personal story very quickly, um my daughter did an internship with the food service staff because she was doing hospitality management and everything. She was extremely tired. And one of the um cooks told her, she's like, you know, for a person your age, because she's like seventeen at the time, she's like, you're way too tired. You really need to go get checked. And so I took her to the doctor and the doctor said, oh, you know, um actually, the food service worker told her, I think you might have a thyroid condition. Because I had been taking her to the doctor. We didn't know why she was tired. Um turned out, that's who service director or uh person was correct. She did have a thyroid issue. And um she had to get treated for almost six years and before it could level off. But the reason I mention that is because that's the type of relationships that our employees, our food service, our um. Yeah, but I mean, these are the relationships they develop with our students. And it's people who are leaders, such as Wendy Novotny, who creates this uh this caring compassionate group of people um to do this with our students. So congratulations again, Wendy.
She's not watching, she's.
I know, yeah, but maybe she'll catch it later. But you know how I feel about you personally, um and then as well as what you do for all of our students. And I also would like to uh congratulate Neil Whitman. He received an aptitude award and want to make sure that he's recognized as well.
Absolutely. Well, if there are other questions that come on, I'm sure we can go back and try and answer them in the feed as we move.
And I have office hours on uh September thirtieth, so come on out at five o'clock to the Welcome Center if you have additional questions that we can't answer. Um there's also a levy tab on the uh website.
Lots of good information.
Yeah, um it's a levy calculator on there as well to let you know what your actual expenditure might be. So. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much and apologize for the All right, next guest that we're gonna bring, he is actually representative from uh Cota. And as we kind of go through, we're gonna get this joined up here in a minute. Hoping, hoping, hoping. There we go. And I'm sure that they're wondering, okay, what's taking so long? This was supposed to happen a while ago. And I do apologize. Um but you know, we had a little technical difficulty and then we had some other fun things going on, so um we're gonna go ahead and bring you on. Thank you very much for being on the show today. Um I appreciate it. Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you for being on. Uh we had, like I said, a little bit of a technical issue earlier, so I'm gonna jump right into respect your time. You know, we, Cota's been out there. I know we've had people come to council and ask questions, things like that. Um I just wanna make sure from this point of view, so if you could just tell us, what, what do you, what do we need to know about Linkus and about this rapid transit for buses? What does that mean and how is it different from what Cota's already doing right now?
Yeah, thank you. Um and thanks for having me on today. So Bus Rapid Transit is a big part of what Linkus is, but there's many different parts because it's really a comprehensive plan. Um so Bus Rapid Transit or BRT is becoming more and more um common across cities in the country. A lot of it is because of its similarity to light rail. It functions very similar, um so think rail, rail on wheels. Okay, um it uses existing streets. Um we have um the ability to um really kind of um focus on um off-board um fare payment systems as well as level boarding. So um you know, people are on and off uh very quickly uh compared to regular buses. Uh they're sixty-foot buses, which allows us to transport uh a lot more people than we do currently on our forty-footers. Um and then um it's a frequency. So there's fifteen-minute frequency on these on Bus Rapid Transit. Um they also have a transit signal priority. Now, um there will be dedicated um guideways, uh dedicated lanes on the corridors. Uh but some of the areas, they'll be in mixed traffic as well. Overall, all these different pieces really make it um faster. Um and we have one that's identified for East Main Street, which will go through uh Reynoldsburg to the Eastwood Development by the Department of Agriculture. Um it's it, it's um, you know, I've built out a couple of these different things. Really, when you think about it, you know, why, why, why this is a good option is how quickly you can implement it. Um it, because of the infrastructure is a lot less um taxing than something like a light rail. But it's also um a sixth of the cost. So um there's, there's that as well. And um that becomes particularly important when we are trying to quickly draw down funds from the federal um uh bipartisan package, uh infrastructure package that is available to us. So we wanna move quickly on the corridors that we can. Um but additionally, uh Linkus is also, I mean, we know that our current service is insufficient. And particularly as we're talking about um being able to serve a growing community. Um and the region is growing. I mean, it's one of the largest um in the nation, but we are the largest without rapid transit for, for certain. So Linkus provides us with uh kind of that roadmap for how we're able to ensure that residents um you know, those, the demands now, but also uh when we, we are um adding nearly a million uh new neighbors and we have to navigate the same number of streets. So um forty-five percent more service in the overall Cota uh service is what we'll see. Um which includes the Bus Rapid Transit, but it also includes gradual increases in service um to include late-night service. Um like lines like um two and ten. Um but also, there's a potential for some of our lines to become twenty-four hours. Um which is, you know, very important as we talk about uh moving people for um work or um different uh reasons. And then there's um plans for fourteen new or improved bus lines. And so really, we're looking for that uh connectivity and ease of using the system versus everything having to come downtown where, you know, that was the, the old um um way we did things. We really have shifted that. And we're gonna continue to try to build out those um cross uh crosstown uh connections. Uh we'll also have see an expansion of the Cota Plus zones. Uh Cota Plus is our micro uh transit um on-demand service. So you should see um up to eight new Cota Plus zones. Um additionally, uh we're talking about five hundred plus miles and a commitment of um nearly sixty million annually that will be specific, specifically um earmarked for sidewalks, uh bikeways and trails. And all of that is uh meant to help our neighbors, uh our neighborhoods safer, more connected, uh walkable, bikeable. And it improves pedestrian safety uh and quality of life um as well as supporting our region's uh Vision Zero uh mission. So um those are eighty-three proj- proposed projects right now um you uh kind of lined up. Um and they're located within thirty-five cities, villages, and townships the first, for the first five years alone.
Well, it's, it's a huge project. You know, Reynoldsburg's involved in a little bit. And you did answer questions. Uh my next question about other than buses is there, but I, I wanna go back to one point. You said the light rail component, which I know one of the things that I had seen on social media is why aren't we just doing light rail? And I think you just answered that question. It's one-sixth the cost. Um and that, that is a huge difference uh between what we're trying to achieve here versus what, you know, a rail system would bring.
Yeah, so in, and what I would say, um you know, one, light rail is never off the table. You know, that can be something in the future. But uh while, what we're trying to do here is really um make ourselves, position ourselves so that we can draw down those federal funds and bring them to our region so that we can build out the transit system that we need and do it in a way that we can be, we can see um a real transformative uh vision being put into place. Within five years, we could have three of those corridors up and running if we're using BRT. Right now, um as it stands, if we were to um submit to the federal government and try to draw any of those uh funds down, we don't have the density that we need um in order to be competitive. So these are competitive grants. Those funds are, are there available, but you still have to compete for them. Um we're competitive if we go the BRT route. If we were to try to do, do light rail, we just don't have the density um and we wouldn't be able to get um it, the ranking we need in order to have those funds. Now, tho- those uh dollars um have an expiration date on them right now. They could renew them. The likelihood is they won't renew them at the same level that they are now. Um and so it's imperative that we kind of put our local match, because you have to have a local match. We have our local match uh put in place so that we can start drawing those funds down as soon as possible.
Well, one question that always comes up, um you know, for me, I used to live in Chicago, so I'm familiar with different forms of transit and things like that. I was actually there this past weekend and I saw it, everything, every, every different type of form of transportation all around. But if I'm in central Ohio, um what are the benefits for people that are in Reynoldsburg that might be watching right now who have never, never intend to get on a bus? Why, why should they care? I guess that, that's the nicest way that I can put it, based on some of the comments.
Understand. Um so there's a couple of projects, you know, I kind of mentioned um the uh five hundred plus miles, sixty million annually. Um so there's a couple of projects specifically that are in these um eighty-three uh projects that are lined up. So um there's a shared use path um in sidewalks on Bryce Road from Main Street to Ryder Road. And that's really focused on improving safety there. Um as well as uh construction of a bicycle and pedestrian bridge on the Black Lick uh Creek Trail. So the projects are really, you know, um going to help connect the community and make it safer to walk and bike in Reynoldsburg. But additionally, what I would say is, even if you don't use public transit, there's a, a good possibility that you're concerned about traffic congestion. And that's something that we see around the nation. And uh and when you offer a premium rapid transit option, like what we're working towards building here, people will choose to take it. Um because it does become uh fast and reliable. Um so what you can expect um by bringing that service here, especially uh coupled with the investments in the sidewalks that many other people uh will use in their journey, um is that it will pull people off um and allow cars to move more efficiently on the roadways. So um you know, I think traffic congestion is, is kind of one of the big ones that um even if you don't ride a bus, you should care about this. Um ultimately, you know, what we don't want is, we don't wanna be here ten, fifteen years um in the future asking, you know, well, we should have done that transit thing, you know, way back when we had the chance to. Uh because the population is coming and it will create um some challenges for us. And so we're just trying to get out ahead of it and manage it um so that when it's, when we do start to see more and more of the growth, we are managing it and it's not happening to us, but it's happening in a way that we want uh it to happen.
Now, I wish we could go back in time to about a hundred years ago because I got a couple of pictures in my uh in, in our conference room that actually has um examples of uh a rail in Reynoldsburg from back in, uh again, about a hundred years ago, that you could take the rail all the way down to the city of Columbus. Um do we have any questions that are coming? All right, we have a couple of questions if you have a few moments. And again, I understand that um, you know, we're a little bit behind schedule, but um we'll go ahead and start with our first one.
No problem.
It says, might you know how many people are projected to be riding all the way into Reynoldsburg?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, um how many, do you have any projections on the number of people that might be riding this into Reynoldsburg as far as potential?
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, I don't have our current ridership numbers, so I couldn't, I couldn't specifically say that. Uh what I would say is that we're also extending um our service into Reynoldsburg all the way um to further than what it currently reaches. So if I had the numbers that, you know, what our current ridership is, I might be able to provide that. I just don't have those available. Happy to.
Yeah, if you could send that, we can, we can go and post it.
Uh what would it take to have Cota Plus in Reynoldsburg like Grove City? As soon as possible, a timeline for that?
Well, so I think we're currently working on, um you know, one, we've got to get through Linkus. Um and then um the way that we will decide how Cota Plus goes in is really going to be dictated by um that program policies. Um and so it will kind of um allow us to say, what areas do we um implement that in first? Um as you know, it will require um see us uh to be able to acquire vehicles as well as bring on more staff. So there's some pieces that have to happen. It's not a, you know, overnight kind of thing. It is one of the easier things maybe to implement. But we do have uh multiple areas within our region, um kind of itching to have Cota Plus zones.
I know we've had a couple of uh employers that have been looking for it as well, which I know we've talked about. And our last question.
Um are there any features that are specific to serving seniors?
Well, we have multiple um things, but I would say that uh one, one of the things I'm most excited about is something. Well, we have multiple things, but I would say that one of the things I'm most excited about is something like the bus rapid transit corridor. And coupled with the connection of the transit supportive infrastructure, like the sidewalks and trails. Ultimately, what our goal is, is to have an ease for people to age in place. And, and what that means for us is they have to have freedom in that they have some sort of transportation mode. And right now, even if they could use a bus, getting to those buses is not always easy or achievable because we have some gaps in our region with regard to you know, sidewalks and, and walking trails and that sort of stuff. And so connecting that piece with the rapid transit, which again is level boarding. So you happen to have anybody who's, you know, struggles getting up onto those buses. Because if you've ever been on a bus, you have to, you have to kind of step up onto them. It's not the easiest thing. Additionally, anybody with wheels, you know, whether that's a wheelchair or a stroller or whatever the case is.
A knee skater perhaps? People on knee skaters or something, yeah.
Absolutely. You just kind of, you just kind of roll right on. There's no, you know, waiting for a ramp to go down and then waiting for it to go up. None of that stuff needs to happen. So what I would say is, one, the bus rapid transit coupled with the sidewalks is going to be a big piece of that. Additionally, we do have mainstream that really, you know, when we have people who have mobility challenges, they serve that population. That service is really a meant to complement our fixed route service and our BRT service. And so the more you see fixed route or our bus rapid transit expanding, you will see mainstream expand as well.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time today. I think that was the last question, correct?
We had another one come in.
One popped in.
That one more time, or we can answer them later. It says, can you clarify how the Reynoldsburg walking and biking trails will be better connected or extended through the link us improvements?
I can, I can go with that one. So I, I want to respect your time, but that one I can definitely kind of go for. So I appreciate you coming on. Thank you very much. Obviously, there'll be some other open houses that we'll post out there for people to gather more information and we'll see what happens in November.
Okay. And don't forget to remind them about the Town Hall in Reynoldsburg on October ninth.
Yep.
Look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you very much. We'll see you soon.
Hey, bye.
Bye. All right. So the trails really are basically going to be, the goal is to make everything connected. So the idea would be that these trails would be improved upon the Bryce Road Corridor with realignment at the intersection. That would also connect to Bryce Park, which then could also allow access to other areas all the way throughout. And that would just be in the first stage. Everywhere else is going to kind of continue on after that. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and quickly introduce, hopefully he can hear us, Joe Sorenson and his crew for tomorrow night's parade. Nice to see everybody there. I apologize that it has taken this long. Apparently we had a few technical difficulties on our end. And then some really good questions all the way across. So can you hear us okay? All right, good. Making sure. So this is your moment. Tell everybody why everybody should come out tomorrow to around the Livingston campus and what's going on. Not all at once.
To come out and see the parade because it's something that we've been doing for many, many years now and it's very fun, family friendly and community based. And it's a great way to see everything else that's going on in the community. Whether it's the football team or the tomato festival float, it's just an amazing thing to see.
Amazing how you brought up the tomato festival float. I, I wonder why that was.
I wonder why.
So, you know, this is, this is something that I, you know, and I love the fact of this parade because one, everybody enjoys it. And the, the different schools that have their themed floats that are there are phenomenal. That everybody really buys into it. You have plenty of teachers walking. You have kids walking. It's athletic groups. It's the band. It's student count. It's everybody all the way around. And I know you guys do so much of it. Do you have any idea how many participants, as far as like how many like spaces are going to be reserved for the people today?
We have about between forty to fifty different groups that are participating this year.
Yep. And the best part is that you guys are, where everybody's giving out candy, right? That, that's really the best part. Yeah. And I know I mentioned it the other year. So once you guys are done tomorrow night, what do you, what does student council do on Friday? Because I, I, I think everybody needs to hear this.
On Friday morning, we have a committee set up to go around the parade route one, once more and then clean up the yard. So if there was candy on people's lawn, we make sure that we clean it up because we know it can be disturbing. And yeah, I think this year we have a group of like fifteen people who are going to go out Friday morning at nine AM and clean it up. And then Friday evening, right before the football game at six, we will be helping crown with tomato festival royalty, the homecoming king and queens from both Summit and Livingston schools.
And then I hear the performance in that night too.
I'm sorry, you broke up on that one.
I heard the band performance Friday night and then there's a football game around that band performance too. So that's what my. Okay. Well, it's a, it's a whole thing. I mean, you really want to talk about kind of getting back to those, you know, to those community roots where you have, you're going to see all of our students and all of their best examples. You're going to see great examples of what kids are doing to kind of be creative and funnel everything. And what you guys do to get this thing organized is great. I know Mr. Sorenson does a good job, but he makes most of you do all the work, which is exactly the way it should be. But you do a phenomenal job and I hope that we have a big turnout tomorrow all the way across. I know I'll be there. And it's just going to be a lot of fun all the way around. And I really appreciate you being patient. Thankfully, you guys didn't have school today, but you all came in anyway on a day off of school to go ahead and do this and get ready for tomorrow night's parade. So, yeah, I figured you probably.
I do. I just want to point out, we got this group here, but we have a full room in here. They came in on their day off, man, to finalize everything for the parade, the crowning, the dance, all of it, man. We'll be here till about five o'clock tonight, working hard.
We appreciate all of you for all that you do and I will see you out there tomorrow. And again, if you want to, what time's the parade kickoff?
Six fifteen.
Six fifteen. So anywhere from basically you go from Rose Hill to Bartlett, to Ives, and then back up Retton and then on to Rose Hill again, if I remember the route correctly. All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us. Go get back to work.
You as well, sir. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thanks. We'll see you all soon. All right, everybody. Big thing. So I'm going to go quickly through everything else because there's still a lot of things out there. Obviously, we talked about the levy, but I'm going to highlight one of those apartment complexes. This is the Oaks off Wagner. They pay eighty-six thousand dollars a year in property taxes or about four hundred and seventy-five dollars per unit. I do want to remind you, especially if you're from our Nepali community or any community really, tonight on Facebook Live with Councilman Boone Pacarel, it's going to be at eight thirty. And then October third, you have the Chamber of Commerce Lunch from eleven thirty to one, the Raider Nutrition Chat from nine to eleven. You heard the other open house, it'll be on October second, as well as October seventeenth at the Senior Center. So all of those things are going on. Other cool things that the schools are doing, a big shout out to the girls volleyball team. They're having their volley for the cure October first at the Summit Campus. That's because you wear pink on Wednesdays. That's not a Wednesday, but you still have to wear pink on Wednesdays. But that'll be open, doors open at four thirty there, but it's a great cause. We also have a couple of cool things going on. We have shop with a cop with Meyer gift cards that are accepted for November twenty-fifth. So if you want to go ahead and donate to that for RPD, Meyer gift cards are great and bring them to the police department. We also have an open house for the Turo Township Fire Department off of Livingston on October sixth from eleven to two. I've got two walk and talks left and the last walk and talk was really cool because we had somebody who was there at the beginning. And then we had a couple of people en route, join us all the way to kind of pick up some trash and answer some great questions about what's going on in the community. So I've got two more to go. Hope you can make it. Wagner Road is still under construction in case you hadn't noticed. So we're going to be getting closer to working on that bridge and probably the next week to ten days. Did mention that you're going to have the BRT Open House Wednesday, October ninth at the Livingston Campus from six to seven thirty. So a representative will be on hand to kind of talk about that. We also have the Hart Food Pantry that is located currently on Main Street. They're going to have their big grand groundbreaking ceremony on Monday. And then after that, I think everybody's going to go through O'Charley's and no, not the new drive-through feature that they have there. That's already been taken care of. But O'Charley's is back open after the incident this weekend. So if you want to go out and support them, that'd be great. If you want breakfast, reminder that the VFW on Wagner Road does have breakfast every Saturday morning from nine to twelve. So check that out. There's an issue one Town Hall meeting at the Reynoldsburg Library on Thursday, October tenth from seven to eight. And the next most important thing in the world is calling all dinosaurs. If you have a dinosaur inflatable costume and you want to participate in what will be an amazing experience, come on out to the Reynoldsburg Hollow Weekend at JFK. We're going to be here from about, really everybody from six to about nine o'clock. There's going to be a lot of things going on. But the dinosaurs are relatively early because even dinosaurs get tired. So come on out on October nineteenth. I know I did get two questions in that are outside of everything. So the first one is, is there anything the city can do regarding the greenery between Fridays and Panera? We'll take care of that one easy enough. And the other one says it looks like Fridays is closed. It is closed and there is a replacement in the work, but we don't know who it is yet. We do know that they are working on something. There's a couple of technical things that they have to deal with between the property owner and the leasing companies, but something else will be there. I don't know what it is. I'm sure everybody has their wishes for it. Next question is, a few people who get on the bus at Hanson, why have a parking right on that, on this side of town? That's actually a really good question. The parking right is actually going to be located further down at the Eastwood location. And that's going to be because it's a joint venture with the Lincoln County Transit Authority to help provide shuttle services to a township for all of the facilities out there. So there are going to be things in that particular location. So you probably won't see as much turnaround traffic at Carlisle and Hanson. But the next part of the question is even better one. It's asking about a traffic light because of some of the traffic on Main, on Main Street in that area. Absolutely, there's going to be. Once we get everything identified with the athletic facility that's being going to be built there. Once we figure out where that entrance is going to be and how it all flows, that's when we're going to go ahead and figure out where a traffic light goes to kind of help. One, make those breaks for people who are leaving that neighborhood to go on to Main Street, but also kind of slow people down in areas that in theory are thirty-five, but I'm really not sure too many people actually go thirty-five in that area. I know I went through a lot of information really, really fast. Do we have any questions that have come up outside of that?
Uh, we could have some about the levy. I say we just try to respond through Facebook to give them the information they need about meetings and more information about quota. We'll connect them through our social media platform.
Sounds good for that. And if there's anything else, as always, please feel free and reach out. And again, the reason why I brought between the board president, you know, I've always bring school board members on and there'll be others between now and the end of the year. But I also brought in representatives from Coda because there's some questions I cannot answer. And if you're talking specifically about what Coda has to offer for the city of Reynoldsburg, it's fine. To the best of my knowledge, there's no opposite, you know, opposition for saying that, no, they don't want it. Same thing for the school district. But if there were, I would invite them to come on and share their views. So it's not just a one-sided thing. It's just whether or not somebody wants to have that part of the conversation. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and get ready to close out. Our next show is next Wednesday. Councilman Boone Pacarel will be here and he will be talking all about the Dewali Festival, which is in just a little, just over a week from now. So I hope you can come on out for that one. It'll be Councilman Pacarel, myself and about ten thousand of our closest friends out at Civic Park. And I think what, gates open at a one thirty, but the event starts at two. And then we'll do all of the event things all the way throughout. But for everybody else, please stay safe, please stay respectful. Thank you for being patient with some of our technical issues this time. And again, special shout out to the Reynoldsburg City School District for sparing Board President Angela Abram and Coda for coming out and having a conversation. I hope to see everybody out on the parade route tomorrow night around the Livingston Campus. Have a great day, everybody. We'll see you. Make sure you put your shopping carts away.